So it looks like we have a quorum. Do you agree, Lynn? Okay. Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Coppola. I am the Chair of the Rested Planning and Zoning Committee. And welcome to this special meeting to talk about Reston National. I'm going to provide a statement initially, just for some background on this special meeting. And then we could proceed. After that statement, Mark, if you and your crew have anything you'd like to say to get it started, I'll give you that space and then we can dive in. So on May 17th, 2025, based on feedback from numerous P and Z members, I submitted an email to Hunter Mill District and the P and Z requesting a special meeting to finalize P and Z input on this project on Reston National on June 2nd, 2025. The reason for the special meeting was that the schedule for the SSPA process was such that any delay to the meeting would remove the ability of P and Z to provide an official response to this application, which is our duty prior to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors vote. On May 19th, 2025, a special meeting was discussed at the P and Z meeting and the vote was split whether or not to proceed. Seven for, seven against, one abstention. Based on this information on May 21st, 2025, I reconfirmed to the P and Z and the Hunter Mill District that we should proceed with the June 2nd P and Z special meeting. The P and Z bylaws require notification to P and Z members more than seven days in advance of any special meetings and five days, five days' notice for the public. The timeline noted previously satisfied these timelines, so there was no reason to delay the meeting. And as I indicated previously, any delay removes the ability of P and Z to provide an official response to this application, which is our duty. As Chair, it is in my purview to proceed with a special meeting and based on all of the information provided and input from P and Z members, we are proceeding with the special meeting tonight. While I don't have any current projects or patent conflicts of interest that I'm aware of with the applicants, since the last meeting, I completed a conflict check within my company and discovered that there are company connections with one or more of the applicants. Therefore, given the volatile nature of this application, I am recusing myself of any discussion or vote on this matter and will simply facilitate this meeting. Given this information, Mark, would you please provide any information necessary on your end to start the meeting?
Thanks, John. Appreciate it. For the record and for everybody, my name is Mark Looney. I'm a Land Houston zoning attorney with Cooley. We represent the nominator for this site-specific plan amendment application or nomination. We had provided the committee with an overview of the nomination several weeks ago outlining the nomination itself and its relationship to a companion a PRC plan application that was at that point to be filed with the county and I think will be filed tomorrow under the current zoning of the property. And I'll say I wasn't involved in the, or I guess John called the meeting to this and what I thought I could do is just outline for the committee the timing as we understand it with respect to what will happen with the SSPA nomination so that it can inform the committee to the extent that you're interested in providing input into the county's process that you do so within what we understand to be the timing constraints that are set out. Just to refresh everybody's memory, what is proposed is a site-specific plan amendment to the county's comprehensive plan. There is no zoning application submitted in furtherance of that site-specific plan amendment nomination. Instead, it is essentially a request to the county to dedicate staff time and resources to evaluate the substance of the proposal to receive materials, information, studies, analyses that the nominator likely would be asked to provide in furtherance of that evaluation. And then ultimately to make a recommendation to the Planning Commission and to the Board of Supervisors on whether the comprehensive plan should be amended. And to the extent that there is a recommendation to amend it, that that staff recommendation would encompass or embody what the staff believes is the appropriate amendment to be considered by the Planning Commission and Board. We are not at this point in time seeking the committee's approval or disapproval of any specifics with respect to what is contained in that nomination, but instead effectively just asking the county as opposed to the committee, but asking the county to agree to dedicate some time and attention to the proposal to further evaluate it by placing it on to the work program that the all the other SSPA nominations countywide would be placed on to for further evaluation. So there's no companion zoning application that comes with this. It's really a request for time and resources at the county level to be able to help evaluate whether a change to the comprehensive plan is appropriate or necessary. I'll add one more thing, which was we were copied on some email correspondence from Mr. Penniman and others on the committee about his specific proposal for what might happen to the property in the future. Obviously appreciate his consideration and thought that went into that. I'll just say that from the nominator's perspective, some of those details I think are a bit premature relative to where we are in the process. We've not sort of, other than what you have read already with respect to sort of the amount of property to be evaluated in terms of what's developed, what's not developed, what to do with the not developed portion of it. You know, there's no zoning application per se that would implement those things. And so from our perspective, it's really about trying to figure out the resources that would need to be dedicated to further study in whatever form or fashion were to happen. The Planning Commission currently is scheduled to make their final recommendation or its final recommendation on Wednesday of this week. And then the board is scheduled to take up all of the Planning Commission's recommendations on all of the site-specific plan amendment proposals countywide next Tuesday, June 10th. And so from a timing perspective, to the extent that the P and Z committee wants to weigh in on what should or should not be added to the work program, the planning, the, the, the timing for making that information available to the Planning Commission, Commissioner Carter is before Wednesday, June 4th of this week and for the Board of Supervisors, that would be before June 10th, which is a Tuesday a week from tomorrow. So with that, that's all I had intended was just to sort of lay out what are we asking for, or what are we looking for at this point in time? And what do we think the process looks like in the next eight days? I'm happy to answer any other questions that people have, but we have made a presentation at the last meeting as to the substance of what was proposed and happy to revisit that to the extent that you find it necessary.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Mark, for that. Looks like we have some hands up or had two hands up. Lynn, you're number one.
Thank you, John, and Mark, thank you for coming back again and giving us another bite at this apple, which I'm really kind of confused as to why we're still, why we're back. It was my understanding that the SSPA, as it was originally nominated, lacked a lot of detail that the Planning Commission looks for in these kinds of proposals. I think that's one of the reasons that staff recommended that this not be included in the work program. And it really appears to me as though you are asking staff to put forth the time and effort to develop your plan for you as to how this should look and you know, I, you know me, I am, I am a proponent of what has been adopted in the comprehensive plan. And I do not feel that it is the community's fault that these speculators overpaid when they bought the golf course. But they have failed time and time again, and they are holding on to the vain hope that they only have to succeed once to overturn all of the work that we did in the comprehensive plan and 60 years of history in Reston protecting our golf courses. But I really do think that I agree with the, with the Planning Commissioners that, and staff that this nomination fails to, to meet the requirement for details in order to be included in the work program. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Bill Penniman?
Mark, so a couple of things. You would have seen the motion I was prepared to make tonight, which would ask the Planning Commission to approve further consideration, but only provided you were willing to limit the development of the area north of the pipeline right of way, basically. And all the rest would go to some device for permanently protecting it as open space, whether by transfer or whatever. My motion does not get specific on that because I understand the details would need to be worked out. But if you're saying that you're not even willing to entertain such a limitation, and I'm not willing to entertain a proposal for 86 acres, then I'll have to pause for a bit to decide whether to make my motion at all. The second question, I'd like your reaction to that. I have another question, too. Why don't you go ahead?
So, so Bill, I appreciate it. I think I'll, I'll ground my answer to that in sort of the way some of these, many of these SSPA nominations are, are handled historically and not just on, on this particular one. Or maybe I'll answer it in the context of what I think ought to be the correct process for how to do this. I'm not saying at the end of the day that your idea of where and what and how isn't necessarily the substantive answer for where this thing ends. To the extent that that's the direction that it takes. I think all I'm suggesting is that when it is added to the work, should it be added to the work program, that there be sufficient flexibility to work with the staff, with the county, with the neighbors, with whomever, to evaluate different options and different proposals as part of it. So that we could come up with the best plan that satisfies the most needs and not necessarily to prejudge the exact end product that comes with it. Which is why I was saying earlier, we're not really, at least from my perspective, no one is asking anybody to approve developing the property now. Instead, what we're asking for, have asked for, is to say we'd like to further evaluate the idea of whether it makes sense to pursue development on it. And you know, it, it could be as an example that the area to the, I'll say the northeast that is parallel to Sunset Hills Road, and I can't remember exactly where your line was drawn on what you showed, but the area closest to, to, excuse me, to Sunrise Valley Drive on the north side of the property, that elements of that get included because of proximity to Sunrise Valley Drive or Soapstone or, or the transit station or whatever it is. And we draw the line slightly differently than what was in your proposal. I just, I just wanted to have the flexibility that if, if the consensus was that this ought to be added to the work program, that there's some flexibility to evaluate a range of options and not just a singular option with it. I'm, I'm not looking to, you know, we're not far enough along, I guess, is what I would say to say this is the one and only proposal that works for this. And I think I've tried to make that clear that we had to, as part of the process, put together a proposal and did so based on sort of what we understood to be both from the, I'll call it a process and, and community and county standpoint, what we thought was necessary to satisfy the submission requirements of the SSPA nomination, but at the same time in the community meetings that we've had, and even in the presentation of the P and Z committee, I've tried to explain that we're not totally wed to that plan if there is a better, a better way to do this than we've done. We just don't have all of the information and I don't have, I'll answer part of Lynn's statement earlier. We, we don't have any input from the county's side of things on what's the appropriate way to do this either. And so like I said, I'm not, we're not trying to foreclose other options and other considerations as part of it by picking something and saying this is the only way that this can happen.
Well, one, let me reply to that and then I'll have my other question. What I drafted in the motion takes it out to the pipeline right of way and you can do amenities on that as far as I'm concerned, that gets you the 17th and 18th hole, most of the 17th hole, all of the 18th hole along Sunrise Valley. It would include the land along Cold Snack. But it would stop it at that line and not take it into the neighborhoods and upset people any more than absolutely necessary. And 86 acres, I just find so utterly unacceptable. I was hoping to come up with something that would advance the process and not stall at this time. My other question is, what's the relationship between the SSPA and your so-called by right application? Is your goal to end up with a, an SSPA plan? And then you get to choose which one you get? Or does the SSPA supersede the other? In other words, are we just setting up a, give you a multiple choice, not us?
So, good question. The, the, the PRC plan component of this is what we believe is, can be implemented in the near term. And the way we have posited that plan is to raise the question whether that necessarily is the right plan for the next 60 plus years for the property, for the community, for the county. Our plan, I believe, would be that if the SSPA nomination were added to the work program, that we would pause work on the PRC plan or at least not pursue it perhaps as vigorously as we would if the SSPA nomination were not on the work program in order to provide an opportunity to engage in a dialogue about the question I just posed, which is what's the, what's the best use of the property for the next 60 plus years? One of the challenges with that, though, is that the way the SSPA process is set up is that there are different tiers and priority levels within the review of the SSPA nomination. So for example, there's, and I'm gonna, these are my words, not the county's words, but there's tier one, which is we're moving ahead today. There's tier two, which is with a little bit more information, we can move forward. And then there's tier three, which is we'll get to it when we get to it. And there are numerous nominations that were submitted in the 2022 round of SSPA nominations that two and a half years later have made little to no progress on the tier three, we'll get to you when you get, when we get to you. So to the extent that the nomination for the golf course is added to the work program and it is not taken up for consideration within, I'll call it a relatively reasonable point in time, then the ownership probably will bring its attention back to the PRC plan and begin processing that again. If not continue it throughout, because as I've said in the meetings, something needs to give with the property. Either they've got to reinvest in it and turn it into the next generation of a golf course or, and, and related uses on the property, or we're going to go the, the SSPA route. But they're not likely to just sit and wait in perpetuity for the SSPA nomination to be worked on without making progress on the PRC plan.
Sure. And, and so to that, I would note your odds of getting anything above tier three are minimal if you don't come in with a better offer than you have. So I may still make my motion because it has a proviso that it be considered at all, only if you modify it to make it an acceptable range. You can decide that in the next period of time, 90, 100, 20 days. But I will not make a motion to support a proposal for 86 acres potentially of development. So your odds are going to be improved if you accept the, if the commission, Planning Commission adopts the proviso and you accept it. The other thing, though, is, and here's again a conflict I don't understand. The PRC says 14 acres of development, that your PRC plan, so-called, says 14 acres of development and 18 holes of golf. If you revise the SSPA, then it's not going to be any golf at all. So don't you have a conflict between what you're claiming in one case and what you're seeking in the other? I mean, and when do we know that, what's the resolution?
I guess I don't view them, I mean, are they two different plans? Yes, they are two different.
But if you change the. If, if you change the comp plan per the SSPA, then you're dead in the water on the PRC plan.
No, the PRC plan has nothing to do with the comprehensive plan. It's a, it's an implementation of plan of the approved.
I kind of agree with that, but, 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 but it, but it does say it would continue a golf course and the SSPA would eliminate the golf course. So how are they not inconsistent?
So one, the comprehensive plan is a guide. It's not law. Two, even if the, let's assume for the sake of conversation that the comprehensive plan was amended tomorrow to approve even your plan at 40 and 120 or whatever the numbers are, 40 acres of development, 125 acres of, of non-development. Even if the comprehensive plan were amended tomorrow to do that, there is still the requirement to go through the rezoning application process. And the board has discretion, even if it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan, if there are other things that don't pass this, you know, pass muster, the board has the discretion to, to deny the rezoning application. So the designation on the comprehensive plan doesn't guarantee the outcome of the rezoning, even if the comprehensive plan were amended to do what you want it to do or what we've suggested be done or, or some alternative that none of us have thought about as yet. So is it, is there a conflict? Yes, between the idea of doing something different from, from what's there today and reimagining what's, you know, a golf course on the property? There's a little bit of conflict there, which is why we brought it to everybody's attention now is because we need to choose a path and we can choose path A or we can choose path B, but we've got to choose a path. And so we're, we're trying to have the conversation around, should we should, should we direct resources to study one thing or should we forget about that and just focus on implementing something different under the current zoning of the property?
Which is in dispute. So there are risks both ways. Okay.
Nothing is easy in life, Bill.
Nope.
True story. Bill, are you good? Are you finished with your questions? Sorry. David Vanel? Or Sue?
There we go. There we go. Okay, I'm, I'm just, Sue may have her own opinions. I'm just speaking for myself. My concern is that shelving this is going to lead, if you don't talk, you're not going to make it better. And, and I think that, that for the, for the, for the sake of the citizenry of Reston, this needs to be more fully examined and more fully discussed. And conversations like just occurred between Bill and, and Mark about the parameters. I mean, I, I rather liked, liked what Bill wrote up as a, as a proposed, a proposed amendment or proposed, proposed motion. But I think as Mark said, it's, and I'm paraphrasing here, it's, it's too prescriptive at this point to, 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 for the developer certainly to, to agree to, but the conversation needs to take place. For those who, who believe that nothing should ever happen to Reston National other than what it is are, you know, what's the, what's the basis in law for that opinion if it, you know, you're, you're denying, far be it from me to defend a developer, but you're, you're denying the developer their right to choose what they do with their property within certain limits. But, you know, gratuitous advice about what the developer ought to be doing with, with their money is, is, is useless. So I, my, I, I can't tell you what my ultimate vote would be for this, whatever comes back to us as a proposal. But but if we don't have the conversation, we're going to wind up with something that nobody likes.
I agree with, with that. I, I do think it's important, very important to consider homeowners' rights, what they bought into. And I'm referring to the adjacent homeowners to the golf course. And so thank you for clarifying the legal by right that applies to this land. I, I do think in considering homeowners, one should look at what the most recent survey of homeowners surrounding that 86 areas consists of. I don't have a summary report. I don't know if that would be provided by RA or by Fairfax County. And perhaps, Mark, you can summarize or someone representing the county, the commissioner could summarize. You know, where are the, where, where do the, the, the HOA members surrounding the golf course stand on this? And I'm not just talking about, you know, a few who may be shouting, you know, their opinion. What is the majority consensus? Is there one? And, and I, and again, I agree with David, there's no give and take between neighbors and developers. Neighbors can end up with no consideration or action about any of their, you know, complaints or their objections and developers can simply proceed by right. We don't want that to happen on this. And so hopefully everybody will kind of use their listening skills and, and some kind of compromise can be reached in, you know, whether this should move forward or not. But do we have any information on, on a recent survey? What, 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 what do the homeowners think? What, 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 what do the homeowners think?
So I, I guess, Sue, we have not, as part of this process, done a specific survey as yet. We had invited. Folks to, we'd mailed to every homeowner or property owner in each of the budding clusters to come to a meeting. To talk about it and had. You know, reached out to them, I think as part of, should this be added to the work program, one of the things that we definitely would do. Is to further engage on those topics. As, as part of this, and I'll, I'll say at the planning commission, I was asked the question, or maybe it was Commissioner Carter who made the statement that. You know, the applicant nominator could go out and have these conversations tomorrow, which is true. But, but what it, but it, what it leaves out, I'll say, is the professional staff. At the county and and VDOT with respect to trying to answer. Some of what we know to be or likely expect to be questions and concerns about traffic and access and other sorts of things, which is why. The way I think about this is that there are three legs to this stool to be able to. Be able to evaluate what's the best use of the property going forward. The, the first leg of the stool is the property owner and and nominator. The, the second leg of the stool is the community and the third leg of the stool is the county. And. What, what I think the work program does. Or putting the nomination on the work program is that it formalizes the third leg of the stool and says, we, the county. Agree that we will participate in. The discussions around what ought to happen to the property, where it should happen, what should happen. Or should nothing happen, right? That's a possible, that's a distinct possibility at the end of this process is that the conclusion is nothing. You know, no change to the comprehensive plan should be, should be pursued. But having the third leg of the stool at. Pardon the pun, at the table is, is the way that you get the most wholesome conversation. In a way that is, makes everybody accountable, I'll say, for what's happening.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I noticed that there's some folks from the public that have raised their hands too, I'm going to make sure we get through all the PNC members first. So anything else, David or Sue? Sounds like you.
No, I think, I think we've said what we needed to say.
Thank you very much. Looks like Tammy Patrine.
Yes, can you hear me? My camera is not working. Can you hear me? Great.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to answer Sue's question regarding a survey, I'm not aware of any professional. Specific survey of neighboring residents to the Reston National, however. If you attended the recent SSPA meeting at Langston Hughes where this was brought up. It was standing room only, the room was ringed three deep, yellow shirts were in huge. Majority and the questioning indicated that the community and the residents around there were negative on this SBA. In addition. Supervisor Alcorn has repeatedly say unless, said unless and until neighbors. Support this, he will not vote for it, so that's just a. You know, tangential answer to your question regarding, but I'm not aware of any professional survey. My concern and comment is completely different. We live in Fairfax County and. I've been studying land use as a volunteer full time since two thousand and nine or before. So I have learned, talking to myriad of staff people. And looking at the Fairfax County budget and attending local meetings, including this committee since I started. Before I was ever an official member. That the county, we're, we are a Dillon state, which means developers do not have to pay for the infrastructure. Made necessary by their development, except for access roads or something that they front on. So the schools, the water, the sewer, the whatever. Parks. They don't pay for getting that in place in contrast to Maryland, which is a home rule state. Where developers don't. Come before Montgomery County until those things are in place and ask for a permit. And that's a simplification of their process, but that's the difference between a Dillon state and a home rule state. So you have a math alert going on here. If you have been listening and studying Reston. For, you know, years, you will already know that Reston is deficient on having certain infrastructure. Items produced, provided. And either it's a VDOT, which is a state funding. Or it is Fairfax County paying for these services. And or it's the Water Authority, which is a multiple jurisdiction. You know, organization. When I first started this. Business, there was absolutely said multiple times, don't ever worry about water sewer, it's, we can handle everything. That is no longer the case. We have new water treatment plants and super duper pipelines to get our poop from Tyson's Corner to Lorton. And it's coming through very beautiful. Undeveloped acreage to get this pipeline there. So, and it's a very expensive, and that is a Fairfax County. Residents are helping pay for that. So my point is, you have to do a math alert on this. Every, there is almost no residential parcel. Whose taxes. Pay for the services that are required for that residence. So when you are talking about commercial, the county is better off, they do. They do at least break even, if not make what we would call a profit, but not for residential. So here we have this SSPA and or by right and Supervisor Alcorn has said he's not sure it is a by right. So that's sort of a hint that that's not going to pass without any conversation, possibly a lawsuit, who knows, and that's not for me to say. But my point is, the cost of. Services for the DU is never recomped, recouped by the county. So every extra unit built further reduces the county's ability. To provide Reston's missing infrastructure. So that is. That's a financial issue that we all need to pay attention to, that regardless of. If you're, you know, my dad always used to say, depends on whose ox is being gored. Yes, people who live around the golf course bought, as Sue so, so sweetly said. They didn't expect this to be anything but a golf course when they bought it. So it would be like if you bought around a lake, are you expecting that to not remain a lake? So you have a golf course environment and now a, a new owner comes in. Opportunistically and tries to develop it. And we don't, the county doesn't have the resources and infrastructure that we needed for previous approvals. So that is the dichotomy and the, the issue. Where I will not be voting for this to proceed for an SSPA. And if it goes to a lawsuit, the county is apparently willing to have that lawsuit.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. It looks like Mike Jennings is next.
Hi, John, can I share my desktop? It's going to be easier for me to.
Sure.
Can you all see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I just want, it's easier for me to present these and for people maybe to see where I'm coming from. The first thing I wanted to talk about, because there's been some back and forth on this, which is, what is our committee's responsibility? I'm not going to read the first bullet, but you can see what it says. What it doesn't say is that we're a rubber stamp to the viewpoints of Reston Association or Reston Citizens Association or any other community group. What we do is we listen to what those other community groups say, and it's input to our process. We're, we're, we're not beholden to RA or anybody, we have our own brains and are making decisions with their input. Second point I wanted to make, that's come up. From various areas is about, oh, the recent comprehensive plan update, it was overwhelmingly agreed that that's going to stay a golf course. No, I was on the task force, we did agree that it would stay. Private golf course. But reminder, first reminder is, we weren't even allowed to discuss. The RGNC open space, it was shut off. So it's not like we sat around for two years talking about the golf course and decided to keep it a golf course, we couldn't even talk about it. And then the plan update itself. It, the last vote we had on it was seven to seven. There were thirty people on that committee and only. And plus one abstention, and only fifteen were at the final vote. The person who abstained saw that it was a tie and felt bad for Supervisor Alcorn and changed their vote to a yes, so it would move along. So there's not this overwhelming community sport that you often hear. For this to remain a golf course, at least. Per the comprehensive plan task force. Third, the Reston National Golf Course is private. It's only a few hundred golfers per day can enjoy it, and per the developer, only fifteen percent of the people that golf are Reston residents. A few adjacent neighborhoods have used twelve of one hundred and thirty two clusters and two condos out of twenty nine. So the vast majority of sixty five thousand residents of Reston are not able to take advantage of this space. Secondly. I feel that a minority of Reston residents are driving this conversation. The sure Langston Hughes was packed. But that's a, it's a vocal minority. And if you just look at, you talked about a survey, there was actually a survey done in twenty twenty two. I don't know if it was Supervisor Alcorn or who. It was sent only to the. Clusters adjacent to the golf course. There were eleven hundred responses received back. The diagram on the right of this slide is where the. Responses came from, so you can see it's just from around the golf course. And again, this is a, the source of this is a Walter Alcorn statement from September twenty sixth. And for me, it just doesn't seem right that we're deciding something that would benefit all of Reston just by the voices of eleven hundred people. And last, these are additional benefits of golf course redevelopment. I'm not going to read the bullets in detail, I would like, you know, these slides and I'll have to send them somewhere, I can put them into the record. There's affordable housing expansion, yes, they haven't said exactly how much affordable housing. Because that's to be decided on the final plan, if this were to get discussed. There's more public recreation access, walking trails, parks, gardens, those things could be there rather than a golf course with some. Few holes on it, economic revitalization through jobs and cafes and shops. Reducing maintained turf areas. Rat and using more natural open space. Some community cohesion that fosters social interaction with maybe performances, dog parks and stuff. Right now, there's, there's no cohesion there, it's just golfers and, and people on their decks looking out. We could repurpose underlies, underutilized land to the benefit of the community. It would permanently protect open space through conservation easements. Health equity through public trails and rec facilities that everyone can use and get physical activity. Fiscal responsibility, you know, this isn't a municipal golf course. But it would generate some. Potential tax revenue from housing as well as jobs. And then it aligns more with the Reston vision that we did talk about in the task force of community, you know. Cohesion again, walkability, sustainability and social equity over the exclusionary land use of a golf course. So that's why I think we ought to put this thing, at least have another discussion, as David Vanel says, let's have a discussion about this, let's. You know, if we say. Let's move the SS, we recommend moving the SSPA forward, it doesn't, we don't know what the final design is going to be, there's going to be all kinds of. Additional hearings and community meetings and stuff to, to go through that and, you know, it may end up. That it even doesn't happen then, but. We should at least have this conversation is my feeling, so. That's all I've got, John, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mike. Tammy, it looks like your hand is still up, but I'm. Do you have something else you wanted to add?
Yes, but I'll go after everyone else on the committee.
Okay. Constance, I'm going to skip over you while we get to the remainder of the PNC members. It looks like Katie McLean is next.
Hey, hi, thank you. So a couple things I want to say, so. I'm being a little cheeky, but maybe not quite, so maybe Fairfax County. Planning needs to look at all the golf courses to see where the public thinks we should get rid of, you know, you know, open space. I don't understand, regardless of I happen to live near the golf course or not, open space is, is finite. Once we, once we get rid of it and we develop it, it's gone. So. I, I don't understand why we're even discussing getting rid of open space when there's a lot of other pre-approved. I apologize, I missed the beginning of the meeting, but I would like somebody, John, or I don't know who, to, to be honest with the residents of Reston and tell us. And tell residents of Reston, how much approved. Residences are already going to be, already been approved and just not built, the brown, the ground just hasn't been broken, because. There's thousands and thousands and thousands right here on Sunrise Valley across from the golf course. There's hundreds of townhomes that were, that are approved that are coming, so. It all sounds great, but why don't we be honest and put on a, on a map and show all the already approved residential, residential housing units coming to Reston. Reston is a planned community, the comp plan shows a golf course, that's what it is. Mark, you're wonderful, and your predecessor, you know, you guys have a tough job, I get it. But Mark liked to tell us at the meetings that, you know, the owners, you know, deserve a chance to make their money, you know, they, they. They should be able to make their. Their investment, what about all the neighbors that back up to the golf course now, they're going to be losing gains, what happens to their investment? It is not a tit for tat, but they were buying something on a, on a, on a crap shoot, you know, hoping that it could be developed. It's called speculation, it didn't work, there are corporations, sometimes corporations have to take losses. We asked about the previous or the current owners if they had done local meeting resident or. Inviting all the local residents to meetings, I brought this up at our last meeting, they did. I went to one at the golf course where they were offering to repaint decks and redo people's sightings, kind of trying to get us all interested and, oh, what a great idea to redevelop it and. We can do some capital projects. And then kind of a similar thing with RA last month about, you know, giving a big capital investment to the Reston Association. Finally, I agree, yep. Mike said there's hundreds of golfers a day, that's true. And in the summer, on top of the hundreds of golfers, there are hundreds of summer campers. My son did it many years here, they are stacked and packed five days a week, ten weeks in the summer on top of the golfers. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Rebecca.
Hey, everybody. Hey. Thanks, Mark and Amanda for coming on Under Fire. So my question is. So I don't know all the history, but it sounds. so I don't know all the history, but it sounds like if if you don't move forward with the SSPA, there is a buy right option. And I just, I wanted to hear from you what if so, if you're not moving forward with SSPA on this, will you move forward with buy right? And what will that look like for the Reston National Golf Course?
Sure, Rebecca. And I can pull this up on the screen if anybody is wants to see it again. But in essence, what the owners have developed is a PRC plan that would revamp the majority of the golf course property itself. You know, new clubhouse, new driving range, new chipping and putting areas, reconfiguration of tees and greens and fairways and other sorts of things as far as keeping golf. And then there's roughly just shy of fourteen acres that we believe is is zone medium density residential dating back to a nineteen sixty-five rezoning case that from our perspective remains unchanged. And we would propose to put two hundred and eighty-eight, give or take, stack townhouses on that little shy of fourteen acres of land. And that would still need to go through a PRC plan process, but it from our understanding of the way the PRC district works is PRC plans or implementation plans implementing the zoning approval as opposed to changing the zoning approval like a development plan amendment, for example. What the owners have indicated is that and I talked about this earlier in the in the meeting. We've prepared the PRC plan and would move forward with that if the SSPA nomination is not added to the work program. How long that takes and what, you know, what twists and turns along the way, I can't quite predict. But they are fully committed to moving forward with the PRC plan in the event that the SSPA proposal is not added to the work program. If it were to be added to the work program and and they understood that some work would be done on it within a reasonable amount of time, then I think they would potentially pause the SS, or excuse me, pause the PRC plan to let that conversation evolve. To the extent that the PRC plan is not, or excuse me, the SSPA nomination does not acted upon or or analysis begun on trying to sort through the questions that it raises, then they probably would turn back to the PRC plan. So I I hope that answers your question. I can try to be more specific if you'd like, but that's the way they've discussed it.
I appreciate that, Mark. I think my concern is if we go the buy route route by right route, then like we we have less of a say on how this actually turns out. And I don't know that I love any of the options that have been presented. So if we do go with SSPA, how much change would we, how much say would we have in in that versus the buy right option?
So and it's a it's a very good question. And I, that's frankly, part of why we are raising this question when we are raising it because as I've described it, it's a point of inflection. And once we pick a path to go down, it's it's harder to to turn that around. And if we go the PRC plan route, and I I think at the Planning Commission, Commissioner Carter had talked about the fact that the next SSPA cycle opens up in eighteen months, and I'm going to take him at his word and say that the next cycle opens up. But even then, there's a question of, you know, whether any future proposal would be added to the work program at that point in time. And in the meantime, I'm pretty confident that not only could we have the PRC plan approved within that eighteen months to to your window, but we could potentially have site plans approved at that point in time as well. And so it it's it's one of these things where if the moment passes us by, then decisions are going to get made and money is going to get invested. And it's harder to unpack that along the way versus if we take a moment, take a breath, try to figure out if there is the possibility of of pursuing something different. You know, if at the end we decide that we it's too far of a too far of a bridge to cross to be able to figure out an alternate use of the plan, then you know, we've spent a little money in the process and we've we've spent some time, but at least at that point, we have finality to the question versus if we're forced to go into the PRC plan process by virtue of the fact that it's not added to the work program, then you kind of lose that opportunity to have a different conversation.
To Mark.
Anything else, Rebecca?
No, thanks, John.
Thank you. It looks like Lynn, you're up again.
Yeah, thank you, John. I I just, I have to take issue with something that Mike Jennings said. You know, the Comprehensive Plan Task Force spent years working with county staff, with our supervisor, our planning commissioner, who is on the the call tonight, developers, attorneys, Mark Looney was part of that group, civic groups and others to develop a completely new comprehensive plan. And that plan for Reston was completely in sync with the county comprehensive plan. And the issue of golf courses was fully discussed and considered. So I just wanted to take issue with that statement that people didn't have any say. That that is incorrect. And the Planning Commission adopted that complete new comprehensive plan, as did the Board of Supervisors. Whatever the vote was is irrelevant. So thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Looks like Mike has his hand up again.
I'm just I'm just going to say that that we did not, we talked, we didn't talk about the golf course. Bill Penniman, I know you were in, no, yeah, I can, I'm going to pull up an email and I'm going to send it around showing where at the time, the administrative assistant to Alcorn said, we are not going to talk about the golf course. I mean, there was an email to all of us. And so
Because it had already been discussed.
That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. It looks like Matt has his hand up.
At Stevenson. Yep, let me turn my my mic and my camera on here. Hello, I guess. I I missed the last meeting. I was on vacation when this was discussed a few weeks ago, which I apologize for. I my major concern is really one of just a sort of holistic look of all of Reston and the planning and the uses, you know, that were laid out as part of the comprehensive plan, which I generally agree with and agree with the the updates that were there made and codified a couple of years ago. But you know, this space as if not publicly owned, publicly accessible golf course, I think provides an important amenity for all of Reston, even for people that don't play golf. Look around Reston. I mean, we we have ball fields at Bering Cameron Park, and we've got outdoor activities at Lake Fairfax. We have urban parks that are scattered through a lot of the new developments around Reston. We've got miles and miles of walking trails. We have public lakes. Not every single person is going to use all of those things. I don't play tennis. I do play golf. Looking at the two options that were presented to us previously, I just think that a modernized golf course is something that is a discussion that I'd be willing to to have and continue. I know there's questions about the density of that proposal as well and the number of of units. And also, you know, how sort of by right that project or proposal might be. But I I think that golf courses as a use are, you know, they take one of those boxes of the play part of live, work, play here in Reston. And to get rid of the one publicly available golf course, even if a portion of that was replaced with other types of outdoor activities, likely those types of activities would be replicated in other parts around Reston. But this is really the only golf course that people that play golf can come to. And I agree with some of the comments regarding, you know, the South Lake High School golf team, camps. I mean, golf is a great sport. I was down in South Carolina last week playing with my brother-in-law, my teaching my five-year-old nephew to play like lots of kids are playing golf. It's very popular right now. So I I just think that a a modernized golf course with some really nice new amenities that appeal to this next generation of golfers would be a huge amenity for the entire community to have. Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you, Matt. Tammy, it looks like we're at the end of the PNC members. Would you like to
Yes, please. I appreciate it. Thanks to all who are commenting. It's it's really interesting to see the various viewpoints to hear them. I do want to say that if this PRC buy right quote unquote plan proceeds, we all on the Reston Planning and Zoning Committee need to understand that there will be hearings if any buy right plan forward. The Planning Commission will have hearings. Mark will come to us again if he's the attorney for the owner, and he will give us very specific details that today are completely lacking. We will know exactly what's going to be asked for. And there are rules for you know, what you can put in where you can't just put in bright lights everywhere. You can't put in things that are noisy. We have God knows parking reimagined where parking has been limited, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not a choice tonight of voting for, well, we don't know anything. And so let's vote for the least dangerous thing that we think we know, because actually there aren't very many details on either the buy right or the SSPA. And if there are hearings, we will have an opportunity to weigh in, not only at the Planning Commission level. Hopefully, Mark will or some Mark Looney or someone will come before us and give us more information in our own meetings. But we will also have the Board of Supervisors hearing on it. So this is not a case of, well, if we don't know about this now, then we're going to get stuck with something. No. This is the beginning of the process. Also, may I mention that our planning staff of the county is underwater. I sent an email around about this several weeks ago. They, to my what I've heard is they haven't, and Mark references, they haven't, you know, completed last year's SSPA evaluations yet. So getting this into the SSPA, regardless of what tier it is, isn't guaranteeing that this owner will go, well, damn, I'm tired of waiting. I'm going to do my buy right thing. So thank you for to Bill Penniman for bringing that up. Are you, you know, what exactly is this owner hedging his bets with getting both? I don't know. I don't care. I just know that this is not the last time that Reston National Golf Course will be discussed and debated. And we owe it to the community to, in my view, as a member of the Planning and Zoning Committee to pay close attention to all of the details, how this affects the overall community. In my view, we we are absolutely Matt's. Again, Matt has a brilliant observation that this amenity, whether you play golf or not, whether you hike the the paths that crisscross that are open to the public. I don't do either of those things, but driving by it is great because it's open space, it's green, it's trees, it's habitat, it's people having fun. It's a very definite positive for our community, and I would hate to see it go away. Because once it's gone, we are never getting it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. It looks like Bill, you have your hand up again?
Yes, I do. And I'll just be brief. The idea that we can wait for all the hearings, if that were the case, maybe that would work if you're optimistic in that area. But if it's by right, as Mark says, I'm skeptical of. But if it's true, then the hearings are going to be much more limited in value than you would like to think. The idea, the assumption that it's been a publicly accessible course in the past, I mean, for pay-per-day kind of thing that Matt likes. I asked Mark if they would proffer to keep it that way, and the answer is no. And what I fear is that we're going to go down a path without any action on any of those applications that will complete the fencing that's already started around the course to close it off to the public and ultimately be changed to a private course. So only rich people get to play it and not the rest of us. And there is nothing that anybody in this committee or anybody in Reston can stop as far as I understand it. Anyway, so that's one reason I like to have some kind of SSPA, just not the one they've proposed so far. And we'll come back to it with a motion. Thank you.
So, Mark, I have a question for you. I I don't know the status of of your your other, the by right case, alleged by right case. If it were to be a by right case where you go through a by right process, can you tell us how many public hearings you think we would have?
So indulge me for a second as I answer the question to get to give a little bit of history. So just to level set, there are essentially five documents that govern any zoning in the PRC district at a high level. The the first is the master plan slash comprehensive plan, which sets out the vision for areas. Beneath that, on the layer cake, is the development plan, which is the one that is adopted and approved as part of the rezoning application. Nowadays, accompanied by proffers. Beneath that is what historically was called the preliminary plan, but later morphed into today's PRC plan. It was it was a preliminary plan, then was the RPC plan, and then it's today's PRC plan, which historically has functioned as a preliminary site plan. So it's after the development plan has been approved. Then beneath that is the site plan that authorizes the horizontal construction of roads, utilities, et cetera. And then parallel to that, I'll say, as opposed to below it is the building permit, which allows for the vertical construction of whatever the improvements are. Nineteen sixty-two to nine to two thousand and seven, the PRC plan slash preliminary plan was reviewed and approved by the county's Department of Public Works and what eventually morphed into today's Land Development Services Group. In two thousand and seven, the Board of Supervisors adopted an amendment to the PRC district that changed the approving entity for the PRC plans from what was then the Department of Public Works and Environmental Services, today's LBS, to the Board of Supervisors. And through that nowadays, the PRC plan is submitted not to LBS or the Department of Public Works, but is submitted to the Department of Planning and Development. And the Department of Planning and Development, as opposed to LBS, coordinates its review. In my mind, in my view, and certainly this is one of, I'll call the the potential precedent-setting elements of this entire conversation. Approving the or changing the approving entity doesn't change the nature of the proposal. It's still a preliminary plan at its heart, even if the Board of Supervisors is the approving entity. Traditionally, since two thousand and seven, the PRC plans have gone to the Planning Commission before they go to the Board of Supervisors. But there are differences in how it is handled and processed as compared to a rezoning application, a development plan or a development plan amendment that you might see with a that you might see with a, uh, an amendment to the actual development plan or zoning to the property. So even if, even as it's changed to the, the approving entity has changed, the processing of what's required with that application by and large hasn't changed. Because it frankly can't, because it's an implementation plan as opposed to the change to the zoning plan. So I, I hope that answers your question, but that's, it's important to provide context in answering that question.
So I just want to be, everyone to understand, huh, do you, how, do you know approximately how many public hearings there will be?
Could be typically two. There would be one before the Planning Commission, one before the Board of Supervisors. Is, is the way PRC plans have been handled previously. The, trying to think of the last PRC plan I handled. Um, PRC plan only might have been for the spectrum redevelopment about a 12 years ago, give or take 12, 15 years ago. That was the last pure PRC plan application that, that we were involved in. I could be wrong, but that's what comes, that's what comes to mind.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Uh, it looks like Jeremy has raised his hand. Jeremy Mack. You're muted if you're talking, Jeremy.
Yeah, trying to find the button for my camera. All right. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to comment uh, about um, I guess in response to some of the comments I've been hearing, uh, people have been saying things along the lines that if uh, the owner plans to go with a by right development, that they can basically cram whatever they want down the public's throat. And that couldn't be further from the truth. There are a whole array of zoning laws that exists and um, what the by right process means is that the uh, the landowner can do whatever they want with the, their land within the bounds of the law. And there, like I said, are an array of laws about setbacks and density and light pollution and rainwater and parking and all of those things. And so when a developer goes with the by right path, the community actually has the benefit of knowing that all of the laws and regulations that have been tried and true for the last, you know, evolving for the last 150 years are what's going to be applied to this project. When you go outside of the by right, what happens is there's an opportunity for the community to do some horse trading with the uh, developer. They might say, well, we're willing to put up with more density than the law typically allows in exchange for this benefit. But that's a whole process of negotiation that um, it requires a lot of engagement and um, considering how large the project is and how many voices there are, I'm reluctant to have confidence that uh, thousands of people showing up at uh, um, community meetings are going to have a organized and uh, efficient influence on the outcome of the development. Um, it's, um, it seems to me like it's more designed by committee or chaos than having a by right process that where a lot of the variables have already been figured out. So.
Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, anything else? Looks like, um, Bill Penniman again.
Yeah, I would just comment on the, the last remarks. Uh, the by right, if Mark's client actually has it, would mean there would be 288 uh, units developed. And then the only issue is how do they comply with the law in terms of um, uh, space for streets and things like that, mechanical things, but the 288 uh, developed units would happen. So in that sense, it would be crammed down. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the definition of by right, right, Bill? Um, okay, it looks like Reese Eisenhower.
Hey, everybody. Uh, thank you all for uh, the ongoing conversation. Um, I just wanted to get my, my voice out there in the mix. Um, and I, I hate to put myself forward as the token representative of a different generation, but it's just, I think it's fair to note, there's not many people in their twenties uh, represented in this call or a lot of the public process. Um, I, I think that's fair to note. Um, and I, I don't think I would know about this issue at all if I wasn't on the Planning and Zoning Committee. Um, the fact is, is homeownership in Reston is a very hard thing to achieve for someone early or even mid-career. Um, it was only by a sheer stroke of luck that I managed to find myself as a homeowner in Reston. Um, and I just am interested in hearing more. I am appreciative that the golf course is so meaningful to people in the community. But I mean, just doing some back to the napkin math here, the 400 people that attended the SSPA uh, meeting a few months ago is about point six percent of the population of Reston. Um, and I think there need to be more voices uh, that are heard throughout this process. And that's what uh, I think the intent of this call is, is to open up the door for conversation, a door that's been shut and uh, locked for many years. And uh, that's why uh, I will be uh, voting the way that I do. Um, so thank you all. I don't have any questions, but uh, I'll, I'll yield.
Thank you, Reese. Uh, Matt, um, excuse me, if you're swearing in the chat, could you please refrain from doing that? Um, looks like Matt Stevenson, uh, do you have your hand up again?
I, I do. Uh, I, I know this is a bit of a technicality, but I think it's important for everybody, especially the public to understand, to, to Bill's point regarding the 286 units. They could develop those number of units if that's what is by right allowed per the zoning, as long as they met all of the other requirements. So I, I just want everybody to understand that, that you could get a parcel of land and it could say you can put 286 units here. But as you start planning it, you can find out, well, I can't fit enough parking on this land for 286 units, or I can't get the required setbacks that I need, or I can't meet the green space requirements or the stormwater requirements. So there's, I mean, to Jeremy's point, there's a lot of constraints that are, are already inherent in trying to go through a by right process. So just be like, if they say we're going to do it by right, they have to meet every single one of those requirements. As soon as they can't meet a requirement, they would then need, you know, a uh, amendment or a, a change, and then it would trigger like the whole process all over again. So I just want to be clear that it's all of those things. I mean, the number of affordable housing units, and plus all the other things I mentioned, would all need to be met in the original application for it to be like considered a by right scheme.
Yep. Good, good points, Matt. Thank you. Uh, okay, Katie, uh.
I'm sorry, I'm back. I just want to point something out. And it's been said a few times in the chat, there are 11,000, over 11,000 approved housing units. Um, Reese, like to, to your, to your thing about affordable housing in Reston. I don't even know what the percentage of those are, even going to be, you know, putting in quotes affordable for Reston. But to, to destroy the little bit of open space that's left just to add more housing. Honestly, it just, it like, for me, anyway, it just doesn't make sense. I, I want to, you know, you gotta have trees to breathe, you know, like we, we need the environment. We just can't be a concrete jungle. So that's it. I just wanted to point out, it's been in the chat, over 11,000 already on the books forever, for eternity, because they're always in Virginia approved forever and ever. Until they come before and they want to change it up, like to Matt's point, if they're approved for 286 and now they're like, oh, we really want 313 because we're going to do triples, two over threes, or whatever it's called. Then they come back and they try to add even more density. So this 11,000 will probably turn into even more at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, Jared.
Great. Uh, thanks all for your comments. So I've been sort of just listening. I admittedly knew and have been doing a lot of research into this SSPA process and those kinds of things. And I, I guess my take on it is I'm a bit conflicted. One, because I believe that community involvement and support is critical, right, to really driving the future. But what I also, I watched the recording of the last meeting. Um, and what I heard the commissioner say was that they felt there was a lack of detail in the submission. And Mark, I, I hear what you're saying about you really want to move forward with this SSPA and you want the county support behind it. But I think the reality of the situation is, is there needs more refinement for this county staff. And Tammy mentioned this, the county staff came forward and said they didn't recommend this going forward. Yeah. I think the developers honestly could take the time to build out more detail, build a little more community support and truly go back for an SSP in the next round. Maybe they don't want to, maybe that's too long. But where I sit right now, I don't, I personally don't feel like it's ready to throw more burden on the county staff to help solve this instead of doing the work as a developer, if that's what they want to do to get it forward. So, but I think we, we can't forget the county staff either in this whole process.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you. And let me, let me respond to that. Um, just as an example, um, we are work, our office is working on a proposal for Lake Fairfax Business Center on the other side of the toll road off of Sunset Hills Road. Um, that nomination was filed in the 2022 SSPA cycle. As part of that proposal, um, the nominator in that case identified what I'll call a street and block system, but it was basically just a taking exist, the existing office park and trying to reimagine how the grid street functioned. And they identified what I'll call a core area and non-core area and identified potential uses in those areas, in each of those areas. That was the extent of the nomination and it was added to the work program. And over the last two and a half years, um, have been working with county staff to refine that to identify, for example, the number of residential units, um, the unit types, where those unit types are going to be located within the development, um, refinements to the grid, refinements to coordination with the park authority, the identification of a school site to be dedicated to the county. Two different traffic studies have been submitted. And what the process enables is to take the concept of, does it make sense to convert that office park from an office park into a mixed-use environment? Which is effectively the question that the SSPA nomination asked. And to then refine, if we were going to do this, what would that look like? Um, I think we get, I, I worry about getting hung up in thinking about a comprehensive plan amendment is the equivalent of a rezoning. Where with a rezoning, you are submitting a very specific plan that says, this is exactly what I want to do. This is what it would look like. These are the number of units. These are the, this is the square footage of non-residential, et cetera, et cetera. In the context of a comprehensive plan, particularly at this stage, the question that we're trying to answer is, does it make sense to use this property for something other than what it's being used for today? And to, to, the, the, that the outset of this process is, is answering the question, does it make sense to study whether this property could be used or should be used for something different than it is today? If the answer is, at least in my opinion, yes, it makes sense to address that question. Then, once it gets into the process, then we begin to funnel down, okay, what would that look like? How much of the property could be developed? How much of the property should be developed? If it's going to be developed, what should it be developed with? How should it be arranged? Um, how much of the development should be? What are the heights? What are the stormwater detention facilities? All of that stuff gets answered as we funnel down from the basic question of, can we imagine this property being used for something different than it is today? And I know the committee is used to seeing rezoning applications that come before you that have a very specific proposal with a very specific arrangement, with a very specific set of facts associated with it. And that's not what a comprehensive plan nomination is expected to have or really ever has.
Sure.
Because we're, we're trying to answer the, the question of, does it even make sense to spend time working on this? And my, my message to you guys, if you, if you leave with nothing else is unless it's on the work program, the owner's not going to spend the time and the money to try to answer the question of, could, or could this property, should this be property, property be used for something different than it is today? Because we don't have a partner on the other side of the table that's willing to engage in that conversation because it's not on the work program. Or let me rephrase that. We don't have the third leg of the stool that's willing to engage in that conversation. Because if it's not on the work program, there are no resources that are going to be added to it or dedicated to, to answering that question. And so we just don't have a, without a partner, there's nowhere to go with it.
Okay, so I, I hear what you're saying. I will say, I would, I would actually challenge every developer to say, you can show up with more than the minimum to try to move something forward. And I think, and I will say, my advice on this one is simply the fact that this is obviously very controversial. And I think for this to move forward into that, it's going to need more work put into it. I mean, that's just, that's my take on it. I understand what you're saying, but I just believe if I was working for somebody, I would do the extra work before I showed up to get it there. And I think that's a little bit of what you're running into. Because again, I'm conflicted because I want community involvement to drive good development in Reston. I, I, I just don't think this is quite there.
I, I hear what you're saying. I, I guess I'll, I'll challenge you in return, right? Which is, had we come forward with a specific proposal, everybody would have taken potshots at the details of that proposal and would have said, I don't like this road here. I don't like that tree over there. I don't like this type of housing in this location. And it changes the nature of the conversation because everybody's taking potshots at the specifics that were provided. And I'm trying to have a completely different conversation. Uh, the conversation I'm trying to have is, does it make sense to think about what this property could be used for that is different than what it is today? Um, we're not asking anybody to, just because it's added to the work program, doesn't mean that the end of whatever process that is, there's going to be agreement as to what, as to what the outcome of that process should be. It's really just the question of, do we engage in the process or not? And if the, if the sentiment is, it's not worth studying and it's not worth dedicating staff resources to evaluating what we put in front of the staff and the county and the community, then that's an answer. We can, you know, we'll, we'll go do what we're going to do in response to that. I, I, I just, it, we're asking a fundamentally different question than I think what you are proposing to me.
Sure. I, I understand. I think we're just in, in different places and maybe a different approach. So I'm, I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Jared. Um, are there any other P and Z members that would like to ask, ask a question or speak? Okay. Thank you for your patience, Constance.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, I'm also, also Connie Hartkey, President of Rescue Reston. Uh, can you see what's on my screen? The, uh, can, can you see that map?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Great. Okay. So um, those are uh, all of the um, uh, uh, zonings.
This is for Reese's benefit.
Yeah. Um, this, this is what's already in, in and approved and, and being worked on um, along with others throughout Reston. This is just in the TOD. So as was said, there are uh, over 11,000 units already zoned, um, but not yet built in Reston. So we have housing. Uh, there are at least 10 other SSPAs that may move forward in this process, each one of them with Each one of them with housing. So why any of you that are supposed to be honoring Reston's planned community? And, and, you know, just the mission of Reston and planning and zoning, why at this time you would consider paving over any of our open space that we will never get back, never get back? When there is this much already out there not yet built? There will be places for 20-some-year-olds to buy if they save their money. I didn't buy my first home until I was 28 or 29. You know, things, things take time and you don't always do it where you want to the first time. Your first house doesn't have to be your last house. All right, about fencing that was mentioned. I have not heard one resident around Reston National object to the fencing that's been, been going, going up. Do they love it? You know, would they rather not have it? Sure. Would the golfers rather not have it so they can still go in people's backyards and get their balls? Sure. But it's not, it, it's not a big deal, so don't try to make it one. And no matter what, the Reston Association pathways will stay open. They will not be fencing those closed. The golf course can be modernized. There is nothing, nothing stopping the owner of Reston National Golf Course from modernizing that golf course other than they are spending way too much money on attorneys and public relation firms. And then, oh, by the way, those 400 people in, at the high school, because I have, I mean, at the middle school for that public meeting, because I have been involved in this since 2012, I know so many faces around Reston. And there was a huge number of people there from the north side of Reston, all over Reston. This is not a NIMBY. This is not just people who border the golf course. It is people throughout Reston and beyond who understand the importance and value of Reston's planned community. And the fact that anybody on the Reston Planning and Zoning Committee does not follow that is just, anyway, I will say no more. We've been asked not to curse. The, the, the last thing I want to say is that bring on your PRC amendment. We're in a situation these days where it's the attorneys, the good ones, that may save us. And I'm going to put my hat in the ring with the county attorneys. Bring on your PRC amendment. Oh, there was one last thing and then I will shoot. What is it? It's important. Oh, the burden on county staff. The burden you will put on county staff if you move this forward against the county staff's desire, against our own planning commission's desire, you are asking for hundreds and hundreds of people to show up at every meeting they can. And, and, and just the burden on staff when they've already got, there's nine or 10 others they're going to be working on. There are the ones you talked about from the last time that are in tier three that need to be worked on. Why would you do this when it is so clear? And I'm sorry, some of you are new to this, but it is very clear that there is huge opposition to this. And if we're going to, Mr. Jennings, I think it is, if we're going to start imagining what might happen in the future, imagine, you know, this wonderful public park, et cetera, whatever else you're imagining, try to imagine who is going to pay for it, pay for building it, pay for maintaining it, because we haven't found anyone yet. And, but I will do a little imagining. Imagine that the camel's nose gets under the tent. And these people get to, oh, just put in a little housing here. Well, you know, there's this fellow named Chris Clemente with Comstock. Oh, his father-in-law is Dwight Scharr, founder of NVR Homes. Okay, so now Comstock, who has been Clemente, who has been going all over Reston, trying to buy anything he can, talking to everybody and anybody about what all can he buy up? Oh my gosh, would a casino fit in recreation? Hey, think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Lynn, looks like your hand is up again. Is that correct? You, you're muted, Lynn.
Sorry, I thought I had unmuted. Yeah, I, I wanted to, to thank Connie and I, I did keep my hand down so that she would have an opportunity to speak. And she is spending her birthday here with us tonight. So I think that shows the dedication and commitment that Rescue Reston has to preserving our open space golf courses. But there is something.
Happy birthday.
Yes, happy birthday, Connie. I, I believe that Commissioner Carter is still on the line. And, and I think that we have a lot of new committee members that may not understand the contract that Reston has with its open space as it pertains to density. And if Commissioner Carter is still on the line, I would really like to invite him to educate this community about that original contract. Is John still on?
I'm still here.
Would you mind, John? I, I will, I will mute myself and give you the floor.
Well, if John wants that, I will.
Sure, that'd be great, John. Thank you.
All right. You know, I, I don't know if we had, have a process for this, just, just to start off. I look at the SSPA process, the tier three doesn't work. Because that's basically a deferral. That doesn't put it in the work program. That defers it. Tier one and two, I don't know that that works. I don't know. Well, here's my thoughts. So what is an SSPA? There, there's five or six criteria, which are loosely worded and usually enforced. I would say the Mason District was probably the outstanding one in terms of enforcing it, but the criteria go like this. You're not supposed to be affecting mature neighborhoods. You should be concentrating the development in the transit station areas. Two, there should be a focus, focus on affordable housing. We haven't talked about that yet. You're not supposed to be affecting the environment. Probably haven't gone very far with that. There's supposed to be an illustrative plan. Now, that doesn't, it's not the same as a zoning case, but there's supposed to be an illustrative, illustrative plan. So you would have an idea of what kind of units, approximate locations of that. You would have an idea of how much commercial. We don't have that. You're supposed to have a robust outreach. May be difficult with that. We don't have any of that here. We weren't ready for that. Now, let's, let's look at where we've been up. Lynn was asking me about the concept of Reston. Reston, and this goes over people's heads and I'm not sure why, but we have this notion of a balance of jobs and housing. So that there would be a job in theory for everybody. We don't, we know everybody doesn't quite live that way, but, but the land use plan was constructed that way. Tyson's was constructed sort of that way. There's, there's not a balance. There's 200,000 jobs and 100,000 housing units. So it's, so it's out of balance. When you get out of balance, it, it tips the scale one way or the other. If it's too much housing, that means a lot of schools to build. If it's too many jobs, that means a lot of roads to build. So Reston is, is based on that. So that we start building, we ought to be careful of how much, how, how many housing units and where they would be located. Now, in Reston, and this is a poster child of this case, Reston is a big area and we have, it's a big cluster area. So the notion was there's a certain amount of development in terms of housing would be allowed. And the developer was allowed to move it around and change the unit types and then provide open space in return. But the housing would remain pretty much as originally done. So now each case, as it comes in, has an open space requirement. In this case, we got a very large open space. The, the streams, we, we've got the golf course, but every project has that. And we have square footage requirements as a percent and we have what's called urban park standards. This case has, in, in approval of those townhouses and the original zoning case has an open space requirement. If you start upsetting that and start upsetting the use of open space coming back and redevelopment, you've opened up a huge concern, at least that we shouldn't be doing that. And there's lots of other open spaces in Reston. The Isaac Newton Square had a soccer field of two to three acres. Can the developer come back and redevelop that? We have areas like Hook Road, if you know that area, when it has six or eight tennis courts. It has a T-ball field. We're going to come back and redevelop that. So that is a concern. So where do I end up? So, so does everybody understand the jobs and housing and the relationship of each zoning case and the, the open space that goes with it? Those are all part of this. And this, this is not just Reston. This notion of open space is all over everywhere. Should be careful about opening that up too wide. Now, in our case, we had the comp plan. Now, this is where you make it difficult for me and who, who cares about me? But we did a comp plan. We spent a lot of time, three years on the comp plan. Lots of hearings, lots of work sessions, quiet ones, loud ones, all kinds of things. Before we started, we had a room full of yellow shirts. And there, there was no process. So for the first time in 60 years, 60 years in the beginning, we now have a plan for Reston. This went through all these meetings. It went to the committees of the planning commission. It went to the full planning commission. It went to the board of supervisors as permanent cases. They asked us to rewrite it, asked me to re- reg write a chapter or two. All of that effort we went through, back through committee, back to full commission, back to the, to the board of supervisors. You make it very difficult on me if you can't trust me to support a comp plan. That, that is a, not something I'm willing to do. And you should not be, you should be, have trust in your county government. Same thing in the zoning case. That open space, if it's part of the original zoning case, should be very careful about opening up, opening that up. And you would expect me to defend those open spaces and not undermine that in the future. So that's why I didn't support this going forward. Now, what do we have as a process? Is the Planning and Zoning Committee not willing to meet with the applicant outside? I don't know if the SSPA process, it doesn't seem like the right process to me. If you put it on tier three, again, that doesn't really get you anywhere. The by right, that gets you somewhere. It gets hearings. So I, I'm not sure we have, have the process. So the details aren't there. Doesn't meet the criteria of SSPA to me. I am concerned about the zoning aspect of it and undermining that. And I am concerned that we ought to be selective of where we put these new developments. So I, I'm not sure what else I could say. But I, I can't believe that the county wouldn't meet with the applicant outside of the SSPA process. I, I know the advocacy committee would. I don't know. Maybe we just have the wrong process all the way around. But I'm skeptical of opening up the plan that, that we've just approved. And, and maybe I'm a stickler to the plan. You should expect that of me. I hope you would. You, you should expect respect on the part of the zoning process from me. I hope you would. Not going to be all over the place. So I don't know. That's where I am.
Thank you, John.
288 units, there's no affordable housing in that, at least originally. We could go 20% more on top of that. There's, there's a lot of unknowns. And how much commercial goes with this? We, we don't really know how much commercial. That takes it out of the SSPA process to me.
So, John, just to clarify, on the PRC plan component, the ADU ordinance would apply and there would be a percentage of units that by ordinance would need to be established as ADUs? So that, that ordinance applies no matter what?
Well, it, it is an ordinance, but it's, it's also negotiated often on these things, depending on what unit type you end up with.
Not the ADU. The WDU, I agree with you because that's, that's a policy. That's not an ordinance.
Yes.
And so, but the, but the ordinance would apply even to by right plans, so long as it's more than 50 units total in the development.
Yeah. But this area of Reston has the lowest percentage of ADUs. The lowest percentage that the TSA has the higher percentage. But, but we don't know what the percentage is going to be. I think you know yet, but we don't have a scheme yet.
We'll, we'll know, we'll know on the PRC plan. Yeah. We'll know on the PRC plan because that's driven by the ordinance. There's no, there's no, yeah, there's, no, we, I mean, we know now it's 17 ADUs that are generated by the PRC plan. So we, we know the specific number based on the plan that we're submitting.
Right. Depending on how many units you get through the process.
Yeah. I mean, but it's, it's, it's based on a percentage of the, of the total units.
Right. Which we don't know yet. We think we do, but I don't know. I, I guess my response was hopefully maybe complicated, but that's, that's the way it works. That's Reston. That's the secret of Reston is those large open spaces. We're only able to get those because you had 7,300 acres to begin with and you could move development around without increasing density overall. That was the secret. And we've got a lot of it here.
Thank you, John. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
I know, 11,000 is the amount approved, but it's 20,000 to 30,000 in the comp plan that would allow, that's within the density in the comp plan, 20,000 to 30,000. So we got a lot of units on board.
Yeah, thank you, John, and thank you for showing up tonight at this special meeting. Certainly appreciate your wisdom and all the hard work you put into our community. Truly. So if there's anything else from you, John, it sounds like, it looks like Lynn's up again? You're muted again, Lynn.
Thank, thank you, John. I, I was going to, as, as chairman, I do want to recognize that Mr. Penniman indicated that he was going to be not making his motion tonight. But I would like to put forth a motion.
Wait.
I move that Reston P and Z support Fairfax County staff recommendation not to include the Reston National Golf Course SSPA in the 2025 work program. If it is the desire of this committee to state a position, I have made this motion and hope that I'll have a second.
I second it. This is Katie McLean. Do you guys hear me? I second.
Okay. We have a motion on the table and I think you meant to say that you're the secretary.
I am the secretary. Thank you.
Yeah, I think you said chair.
No, I said, Mr. Chairman, I would like to put forth the motion.
Sorry, sorry. Bill, I, I, would you like to say something?
Yes, I intended to make a motion and Lynn mischaracterized or misunderstood what I said. I said I was considering not making it, but I intend to. And I think it would be appropriate for mine to go first because it offers something short of full rejection and. And if that fails, fine, then they can go to the full rejection. But if you go to the full rejection, you don't get to mine.
I will withdraw my motion.
No.
Okay.
No?
Thank you.
Oh, it's Robert's rules. Motion is on the floor. It's been seconded.
You're right. It has to be voted upon. Sorry, you're right.
Okay.
It's Robert's rules.
The unfortunate effect of that is you lose my vote, Lynn, so maybe you'll get others.
So Jared, if I could ask you to weigh in here on the rules of this. So so Bill had indicated he was going to make a motion, and we were waiting until the end of the discussions, I believe. And then Lynn jumped in before Bill had a chance to make his official motion and or get a second. Can you let us advise us on what's the proper protocol here?
Right, so proper protocol would be that we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, so it should go to discussion. When discussion ends, at that point, we can vote on the motion, and Lynn's motion may pass or fail. If it fails, we could certainly roll over to another one. You know, somebody could try to also amend Lynn's Lynn's motion. That's another option if somebody wants to do that. But I think what we should do is, Lynn, you may want to restate your motion just to make sure everybody knows exactly what we're voting on.
Okay, my motion reads, I move that Reston Planning and Zoning support Fairfax County staff recommendation not to include the Reston National Golf Course SSP in the 2025 work program. That leaves it open to come back in 18 months or whenever.
And who seconded it? Was that Katie?
Katie McLean.
Okay, thank you, Katie. All right, Tammy, it looks like you have your hand up.
No, my comment was Robert's rules. You have to vote on it.
Okay, anything else, Tammy?
No.
Any other comments or discussion?
Um, yeah, I mean, I would just comment that I think that total rejection, as opposed to trying to trim it down to a more manageable amount of development and a much more substantial retention of open space, exposes us to the risks of being worse off going ahead. And contrary to what somebody else said, the fence is an offense, and people are bothered by it, including me, when I walk by it, and I live right near the golf course, if not on it. And denial of access is effectively closing at this space. So in that sense, the comp plan is already being undermined by the movements of the applicant of building the fence, and I predict we'll eventually turn it into a private course. That's not open space. So I think another approach is appropriate. And with that in mind, I will not be voting in for in favor of what you have proposed, even though I think 86 acres is absurd. 86 acre development, that is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Mike Jennings.
Yeah, I'm just disturbed. I think we should not vote for this motion because everybody got Bill's email earlier today saying he was going to put it forward. He then said, I'm considering not doing it. And he tried to interject while Lynn was reading her motion, and he wasn't allowed to. So I I think this is just kind of rotten. So it's just not right.
I I don't say it's rotten.
Tammy.
Thank you. Has anyone noticed that pathways across the golf course, which are RA easements, have been fenced off? You're talking about, Bill Penniman, you hate this fence. The pathways are open. So as far as I know, unless unless recent days, there have been fences over them, which would violate the easement. And I don't believe that is even allowed. So people rolling across the golf course, you don't want that when people are playing golf. It's dangerous, and it's not in the purpose of the owner to have their liability of people getting conked on the head. So yes, it's it's private property, but there are easements for pathways across it. So have you seen the fences cutting off the pathways? That's my question, yes or no?
Yes.
The pathways have been cut off? The easements have been cut off?
Between the pathway between Upper Lake Drive and Purple Beach, or whatever that road is over there, has closed off access to the pathway that's on the course, which people had traditionally been able to use freely in the winter and non-golf hours. So yes, those are being closed. I understand that RA may have an easement or two across the course some places, but those are not ones that let you walk on the course. They just let you get across it in across it in non-golf hours. So it is being closed.
Well, it's it's private property. You're not supposed to stroll around on somebody else's property unless you're on an easement pathway. So that's, your opinion and my opinion differs, but I'll end there. I just want to be sure the RA easements have not been gated off. Thank you.
The access to the course is what I'm trying to preserve, but also expand, that it would be open space available every day, all day long, to anybody, rich, poor, golfer, not golfer, to use open space. And I'm trying to maximize the amount that's preserved as real usable open space. That's the purpose of my motion. But in any event, we are losing something.
Okay, as our parliamentarian said, we have a motion and a second that we need to vote on. I will say, I think it's very important that this group continue to interact together cordially despite any challenging cases in the future. And some of the things that have occurred during this process have not been great, and I hope that we can all do better in the future. So with that being said, all in favor, or any other comments, questions, concerns?
So, John, just let me make a point to clarify, because around voting, because you had said from a conflict of interest perspective, you are not participating, right? So you will not vote, which means then Chris will be considered a vote for this, just so we're clear. That that'll be make our 15.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. And then Amy, Amy would, Amy will not, because then we've already hit our 15 limited, and he's not on the call.
Great, thank you. You're doing a great job. We appreciate it.
I'm trying, I'm trying to scroll my screen as fast as I can.
I know. We appreciate it. Okay, all in favor of the motion made by Lynn and seconded by Katie? Raise your hands, please, sorry.
John, a clarification, we have a split vote here, so that is one vote for Lynn's motion, not two.
Okay, and can we, is it David or Sue who's voting for it?
Sue is voting for it.
Okay. It looks like I'm counting 11 for in support. It looks like we lost one. 10 for? Is that correct? Am I missing anyone? I'll just read them off. I have Katie, Lynn, Tammy, Rebecca, Jared, Chris, Matt, Michelle, and William Piggies. That's nine.
And Jeremy.
And Jeremy Mack. Looks like hands are going down. Is there anyone we're missing?
You're missing Sue.
Oh, it's Sue.
Yeah, leave your hands up, please. Right.
Yeah. Okay, so we have, was that 10, Jared, correct, or Lynn, whoever's counting?
I have the 10.
Okay, 10 for. All opposed? Please, so put your hands down, and then let's do all opposed. Looks like some of the hands, William Piggies.
I can't, yeah, I can't put my, my hand doesn't want to go down.
It looks, okay, we got it. All right, so it looks like we have David, Reese, Bill, and Mike. Are we missing anyone? Okay. And any, any other, any abstentions other than my recusal? Okay, looks like 11 to
Lower your hands so we can, oh, that's the 15. Yep.
It looks like 11 to four. Yep, so we got everyone covered. So motion passes. And it looks like we will not be, P&amp;Z will not be supporting this moving forward, at least as as written by Lynn's motion. And I appreciate everyone going through this process. I know it took extra time and effort by from everyone, but I think it was valuable and
Bill, I want to, I want to apologize for misunderstanding your statement at the the beginning of the meeting after Mark Looney spoke. So please accept my apology.
Okay.
Okay, Mike Jennings, looks like, do you have a comment?
Just, John, I assume we will send a formal communication to, you know, Planning Commission, as well as via Board of Supervisors with our votes, so they know where we stand on this.
We can, usually Lynn does, does minutes, and she's been good about turning those around relatively quickly. So I'm sure we can share that with with Supervisor Alcorn's office and make sure that gets shared.
Okay.
Great comment. Thank you. And thanks for doing that, Lynn. I know it's it's a lot. It is someone else had their hand up, but now it's down. So I guess, everyone good? Do we have a motion?
I move adjourn.
Thank you.
I move adjourn.
I have a second.
I'll second it. Okay.
9:02 PM.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Okay, thank you all for your time this evening, and special thanks to Supervisor, or Commissioner Carter. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I know.
Bye.